I call the Committee on Finance and Administration to order. I make a motion to move into executive session in accordance with Section 105-F of the New York State Open Meetings Law to discuss matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation. We will return to public session after. Do I have a second?
No.
All in favor? All of you opposed? Okay, we will move into executive session. Thank you all. The convened public session of the Committee on Finance and Administration is called order. We will take up the following items for approval. Action items. One A is the approval of the minutes of the October 9, 2024 meeting. I move the approval of action item one A. Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion, questions? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor, please indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. We will now address an action item one B, a resolution to approve the university fiscal year 2026 budget request. The university is requesting that the board of trustees approve the university's fiscal year 2026 budget request, which seeks additional operating funds of $443.3 million and $2.4 billion in new capital funds for fiscal years 2026 and $9.7 billion in capital funds over a five-year period. Chancellor Felix Matos-Rizilis and Senior Vice Chancellor for Budget and Finance Reeve Solomon will present on this item.
Ready to go? Thank you. Thank you, Chair Berger, and good afternoon to all over here today. I am pleased to present our budget request for the fiscal year 2026. Our budget request affirms CUNY's importance and impact to the city and to the state of New York, outlines investments needed to execute our vision for student success and academic excellence, and underscores the importance of funding the university's mandatory needs. Our budget request aims to sustain our momentum, made possible in no small part by the strong support from Governor Hokel, Senate Majority Leader Stuart Cousins, Assembly Speaker Hasty, and members of the legislature. I extend my deep gratitude to them for significant investment, for the significant investment to CUNY that were included in the recent state budgets that have helped support key strategic initiatives, academic programs, and daily operations, including, for the first time since 2011, funding for a CUNY labor contract. At the city level, despite the fiscal challenges, Speaker Adams and members of the city council worked with Mayor Adams to include funding for opportunity programs, a one-time investment of $15 million in general operating support, and funding for certain mandatory needs in the city's adopted budget. We appreciate the commitment from our state and city elected leaders to support CUNY, and we will ask them to do more as we move ahead in this budget cycle, and applaud them for the recognition of our institution as vital to the fabric of New York's economy and workforce. We're also deeply appreciative to the support from the members of this committee and indeed all of our trustees for their unwavering support for CUNY's mission and their advocacy to ensure that CUNY receives the funding we need to fulfill that mission. In terms of the programmatic requests, in this year's budget, we are asking for investments in several programmatic initiatives that would expand access to CUNY, accelerate student success, and strengthen academic quality and scholarly excellence. Last week, I delivered a speech on the state of the university where I highlighted, among other things, the increase in enrollment for the full 2024 semester. While we welcome this upswing in our enrollment, our overall enrollment is still down more than 10% when compared to pre-pandemic levels. That is why our fiscal year 2026 budget request includes several initiatives to boost enrollment and retention, including new technological tools such as chatbots and an online portal for high school guidance counselors, and enhance outreach and recruitment to a broader geographic catchment area. We are also laser-focused on ensuring that we have a seamless transfer process for our students and multiple strategies to get us there that are outlined in our budget request. Investment in faculty transfer groups and technological enhancements to our so-called T-Rex system are just a few examples of how we're trying to dismantle barriers in the transfer process so that our students can continue their educational pursuits without impediments. As you know, career-connected programs and workforce development initiatives are among my top priorities. The budget request includes strategies to expand our work in this area, including a proposed career success campus model that would integrate career preparation into every aspect of the student experience via exposure, career advisement, career-connected coursework, integrated paid internships and apprenticeship opportunities, and employer engagement. We are seeking funding to implement this model in six of our campuses in 2026, with full adoption coming in the following years. As we enhance our career and workforce development efforts, we are also focused on course offerings that will enable our students to join a pipeline for access to high-demand industries. STEM, health, and arts majors are among those offerings, but it is more expensive to educate students in these majors than it is to educate students enrolled in humanities and social sciences, for example. STEM, health, and the arts courses often require lab sessions, lab equipment, studio space and equipment, and lower student-faculty ratios, and it is difficult for the university to absorb the increased costs associated with educating students in these majors. That is why we are asking for additional funding to defray instructional and equipment costs that would allow CUNY to continue to invest in these disciplines without hampering fiscal stability goals. We really appreciated the state's $4 million appropriation to our medical school last year, and we are again seeking funding for the continued support of the educational training of the doctors our city and state need. To advance our research goals, we're seeking funds to pursue a university-wide strategy to implement a research compliance training initiative to continue to professionalize our staff and to create a permanent infrastructure for university-wide collaboration in public impact research. Another essential programmatic request is our student well-being initiative. As we seek to develop a university-wide ethic here, we seek funding for our well-being initiative that will ensure access to mental health services, connect students to resources to address food insecurity and housing instability, and build a peer network to support students struggling with homelessness. We also seek to deepen our cultural belonging through dialogue and training, ensuring that we can build a truly inclusive campus community. We're also seeking funding to support our students with disabilities through more staff, in accommodation offices, skilled assisted technology specialists, and adaptive sports staff. Finally, as we are on the topic of meeting our students' needs, I wanted to acknowledge a proposal that was advanced by the University Student Senate to create a pilot program that would provide free unlimited MetroCards to certain student populations. I know that transportation expenses can be a hardship for many CUNY students, and I appreciate that possible solutions have been developed to address this need that will be part of student lobbying efforts as we enter the next budget cycle. With the MTA shift to its new fare payment system, OBI, we're building conversations with them about ridership patterns among our students to ensure maximum usage with existing resources. In addition to potential opportunities to extend transportation benefits to more students that might result from these conversations, we have added a request of $1 million to the budget request to help fund a pilot program for a segment of the student population identified in the USS proposal. Our goal is to support you in your upcoming lobbying efforts to secure this funding, which we know will have a positive impact on easing the financial burden of students in need. Once again, I thank you to the committee, to the trustees, to the entire CUNY community for the solid commitment to the success of our indispensable institution. I am confident that by working together in the upcoming budget cycles at the state and city levels, we will be able to deliver on our funding priorities. By investing in these worthwhile initiatives, we can ensure that CUNY continues to be a national leader in higher education access to diverse student populations. And now, I would love to turn it over to our Senior Vice Chancellor for Budget and Finance and our CFO, Sherif Solomon, to cover the overall numbers on mandatory needs and our capital request.
Thank you, Chancellor, and good evening to the committee members and to all gathered here today. So, want to take you through some of the numbers before we get to your questions. Last year, the total budget request was $429 million that we asked of the state and the city. This year, the total amount that we're asking for is $444.3 million, which is a 3.6% increase from what we put forward last year. That is slightly higher than the 3.4% higher education price index, if you're looking for that as sort of a measure or barometer of what we had last year. It is the largest request that CUNY has ever put forward. And the number for this year's request at 444.3, I just want to note, as the chancellor alluded to in his comments, the amendment that we're making to add $1 million for the student MetroCard pilot is the reason why the published version is 443.3, but the final version hopefully will be the 444.3, which includes that $1 million for that pilot program. The programmatic request is at $160.6 million, and the mandatory needs are reflected or total $283.7. A big piece of the mandatory needs which I want to touch upon is, of course, our labor expenses. As the chancellor alluded to, last year, we were really successful in, for the first time, and we thank our state government for, for the first time since 2011, we're able to have the state fund a CUNY labor contract for senior colleges. That was for the classified staff contract last year. This year, although negotiations are still going on with the Professional Staff Congress, included in this budget request for fiscal year 2026 is a wage increase for the Professional Staff Congress. That amount is $120.6 million. You'll see next to that, New York City with no request. That is because the labor reserve that the city has and puts forward already includes funding for collective bargaining increases for our community colleges. The other thing to note with the PSC contract is that the $120.6 million is what's included in the overall number of 444.3. What is not included in that, but what we are asking for, is the one-time retro and bonus costs related to that contract. That amounts to $168 million, and we are asking for similar treatment that was done in last year's enacted budget for the classified staff contract, which basically moved payment dates to our current academic year. In the case of DC 37, it was $38 million. In the case of PSC, it's estimated to be $168 million. So, the budget request includes that ask for that movement of payment dates, and the wage increases, the 120.6, are included as part of the 443.3. Also for labor, we have our contractual salary increments. We estimate at 1% of our PS costs annually. We put these in. They're costs that historically have been absorbed by the university, and we always put that forward as a mandatory need. One final note on labor. Last year, you know, again, we are grateful to the state for including $40 million for the classified staff contract. That $40 million was used for recurring labor costs. And so, we are hopeful that that will continue, that $40 million, because those labor costs will still stick with us for fiscal '26 and the duration of the contract. So, you will see in the budget request a footnote to the labor ask, which includes an assumption that that $40 million will continue. That is a conversation that is ongoing with our state partners to ensure that the executive budget includes that $40 million. Next, we want to talk about other mandatory needs, which are mainstays in each of the budget requests that we put forward. There are, you know, always increases to fringe benefits that we highlight, you know, as part of costs that the university has had to absorb in the past. So, again, you know, mandatory needs for that, for OTPS inflation, for energy costs, and for building rentals. Again, each year, these costs go up, and those are mainstays in our budget request. The budget request also includes expense dollars. We have a robust capital plan, which we're going to talk about in a second, but also expense dollars for maintenance for our infrastructure to maintain a state of good repair. There are certain functions for our facilities that our facilities team basically undertakes, you know, in the bucket of maintenance to make sure that our campuses are meeting the needs for state of good repair. So, there's an expense component in the expense portion of the budget request to cover that. IT support is another major piece of what we're asking for with respect to maintenance expenses for upgrades to technological systems. Each year, maybe there's an upgrade as opposed to just regular maintenance. These are kinds of things as well that we certainly want to support with maintenance expense funding as opposed to capital funding. Lastly, on our capital budget request. As I noted, we have a robust capital plan request. A major focus of the university is, you know, again, achieving a state of good repair. What we use is sort of an industry standard, which basically says that 2% of your replacement value of your facilities is really what you need to have on an annual basis to maintain a state of good repair. So, in this particular case for our community colleges, that annual number is $200 million. For our senior colleges, that annual number is $400 million. In addition to that, we have sort of our enterprise asks, which sort of go across, you know, our campuses. So, university-wide, there'll be, you know, upgrading of labs and libraries, athletic facilities, focusing on building systems, so HVAC and chillers, et cetera. A lot of that is included right in this budget request, but also, we have new construction projects at the campus level that, you know, that are also included. One thing that we do want to note on the capital budget request, it is the largest ever that CUNY has put forward. The number for fiscal '26 is $2.4 billion. The number over a five-year period is $9.7 billion. The past few years have been positive in terms of state support for capital funding, so we look to certainly sustain that momentum for additional capital funding so that we can bring our facilities into a state of good repair. So, that's just an overview of the numbers and happy to answer any questions you have about the request.
Based on the presentation, I would like to move the approval of policy item 1B1 with an amendment to the total amount of fundraising requested to $444.3 million to reflect the additional $1 million to help fund the free MetroCard pilot program. Is there a second? Okay. I'll open up for discussions and questions. I always have a question about capital spending. When we ask for the $2.4 billion, the question is, you know, how long does it take us to actually spend that money? And are we spending the money from prior years? And how do we move it along? I know that the city has been less than helpful in extending out some of their appropriations. I mean, you know, how do we move along the capital spending?
Well, our Vice Chancellor for Facility Management, Mohamed Talha, has been really working to really try to make sure that we are trying to really hold our partners more accountable in terms of delivering on some of the projects that we are, we're trying to move forward. You know, we have, both agencies, this is DASNY, have really been working together in partnership to really try to address, making sure that we're booking a lot more projects. But also, and I'll let Mohamed sort of jump in a little bit, we've done a lot of reforms connected to making sure that when we are doing sort of scoping and design work, that that process used to take such a lengthy period of time. We've done a lot of work connected to making sure that those, that we're sort of cutting down on the timeframe. But we also have really done a lot of work and really expedited the process and a more quickly win. And again, like I said, making sure that we're holding our partners more accountable. Mohamed, you want to add any additional sort of comments?
Thank you, Hector. Yes, along those lines, when we look at our process, we currently have about 885 projects, what we call active projects, about more than 400 of those are either in the design or the design stage. And when we look at that, as Hector indicated, the, one of the issues is the design process takes much longer, and it involves a lot of steps. So, we've worked with our partners, with DASNY, with the campuses in order to formulate and revise a new process that will help us to be able to expedite the delivery and bring the projects into completion in a faster way. So, some of the changes is to bring scoping consultants and look at improving and expediting scope of projects to be more aligned with the academic needs and the campus needs, and in addition to that, to bring it in a faster way. And that included the upgrade of our team and also work with DASNY to modify their design process, their recruitment of consultants, their approval, their billing process, and how fast they make decisions to award. So, many of those aspects are, in addition to many other aspects related to the technology, the actual software of managing the projects, that is our approach in order to be able to expedite and enhance our spending levels.
And one other example, just to stay on scoping. There's no reason why both agencies have to do scoping, right? One agency should be doing the scoping work. So, sort of trying to be a little bit more nimble and really making sure that, you know, we remove some of the bureaucracy that has been created because of this process and has really been in assistance for a very lengthy period of time.
Thank you both. This is encouraging. I know it's being nimble within the bureaucracy is sometimes not easy, but we thank you both.
Henry?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, Henry. Is this the money in the budget? Is this for the design process, or is it for the actual construction?
What we're requesting here, including the design and construction for the project.
So, it's all inclusive? It's not just for the design process and getting the approvals, it's also for action to build out of whatever it is?
Correct.
And I'm sure you project that it's going to be an increased cost over the time because what you project to do this year is going to cost you more to do next year and so on. So, it's be more money.
I mean, that is correct. I mean, the other thing I want to say is on the community side, college side, we have a particular problem. We can't start a project on the community college side until we have both city and state fully fund the project. So, that creates a delay over two fiscal years. So, that challenge really assists on the community side, and, you know, we've been having conversations to try to see if there's something with our funding partners that could be done to sort of even expedite that part.
Yeah, as I understand it, the state matches the city contribution, but the city has to do it first.
That's right.
And the city fiscal year is June 30th, the state's is March 31st before that, so...
That's correct.
It'll all get stretched out a little bit.
Yes. Is this, forgive me for saying this, is this overly ambitious to have so many projects coming up to complete in terms of the money that's available and the time that it takes to do them? Or is this the way to go? You start now and just run with it?
I mean, part of the chancellor's strategic plan is to get, we have a goal to get a facility to state of good repair. In order to meet that goal over that period of time, we're going to have to be more aggressive and more ambitious.
Makes sense.
No such thing as overly ambitious.
Okay. Okay. The only other point I'd like to emphasize, and if you go back to past budget proposals, you may have heard this, but, you know, I think we have to emphasize with the city, restore the pegs, restore the pegs. I mean, we're still down, you know, $80 million, and, you know, as we talk, not only to the funders, the executive, I think we have to do a good job reaching out to the legislators at both levels, particularly the city level, and say, you know, at the city level particularly, you haven't been very nice to us. It's time to, you know, work for your constituents for a while. So, that's just, you know, my personal view, but I'm sure I may not be alone in that. Any other questions or comments on budget? Having none, we have a motion, we have a second. Can we proceed to a vote? All those in favor, please so indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? You have a budget request. I know putting this together is a massive job. You know, I'd like to thank the finance team, but also all the vice chancellors who have to do their pieces of the huge amount of work, and, you know, I really do appreciate it all. So, thank you all. Moving along, policy item 1B2 is a resolution to authorize the City University of New York to enter an agreement with the New York City Administration for Children's Services for College Now Dual Enrollment Program Offer. The university requests the board of trustees to authorize the university to enter into an agreement with ACS for a period not to exceed three years through fiscal year 2027 to provide dual enrollment program offerings and approves the waiver of tuition and mandatory fees for students enrolled in the program, which is estimated not to exceed $114,000 annually. University Dean for K-16 Initiatives, Andreas Sunashan, did I pronounce it right almost?
Sunashan.
And Assistant Dean for K-16 Initiatives, Martin Forth, are available to provide further background on this item and to answer any questions as needed. I move the approval of policy item 1B2. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? This is such a great program in terms of providing access, and this is just terrific. Any questions or comments other than mine? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Policy item 1B3 is a resolution to authorize a contract between the City University of New York and Technolutions, Inc., for SLATE and Admissions, Customer Relations, Management Solution. The university is seeking approval to enter into a contract with Technolutions, Inc., in the amount not to exceed $1,920,000 for a five-year period from January 1, 2025 to January 30, 2030. The university dean of admissions and recruitment, Sharon Harding, is available to provide further background information if we need it. I move the approval of item, policy item 1B3. Is there a second? Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please so indicate. Thank you. Any opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. Policy item 1B4 is a resolution to authorize a contract between City University of New York and Kennedy &amp; Company to provide training and maintenance services for SLATE recruitment and admission solutions. The university requires an implementation partner with specialized expertise in implementing the SLATE and the admissions ARM system. The university seeks to enter into a contract with Kennedy &amp; Company, Inc., for an amount not to exceed $1,85,500 effective February 1, 2025. The university dean of admissions and recruitment, Sharon Harding, is available. I move the approval of policy item 1B4. Is there a second? Thank you. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor, please so indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. Policy item 1B5 is a resolution to authorize a contract with Noodle for online social work program development. The university seeks approval to enter into a university-wide, five-year contract with Noodle permitting Hunter College make expenditures and purchases not to exceed $8,749,991 over a five-year period for online social work program development. Hunter College interim vice president for academic affairs and provost, Anoy Partesani, and executive director of finance and business operations, Danielle Kolker, are available to provide further background if we need it. I move the approval of policy item 1B5. Do I have a second? Yeah. We've We've had issues in the past with contracts relating to online contracts in terms of how they were structured. This contract avoids those problems. It's a fee-for-service contract and will be reviewed and, you know, I think we're finally doing it the right way. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please so indicate. Any opposed, any abstentions? This matter is approved. Policy item 1B6 is a resolution to authorize a contract with Thomas Reuters Westlaw. The university School of Law is seeking approval to enter into a contract with Thomas Reuters to purchase the Westlaw database for a three-year term at a cost not to exceed $600,000. CUNY School of Law Executive Director of Budget and Finance and Administration, Mario Crescendo, is available if we need. I move the approval of policy item 1B6. Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion or questions? I think my last Westlaw bill was almost as much, so it's. All those in favor, please so indicate. Any opposed, any abstentions? Seeing none, this matter is approved. Policy item 1B7 is a resolution to authorize a contract with EBSCO for APA Psych Info, APA Psych Articles, and MLA International Bibliography. The current contract with EBSCO expired on September 30th, 2024, and the university is seeking approval to renew this contract for a period of five years for an amount not to exceed $3,229,992. Interim University Dean of Libraries and Information Resources, Michael Waldman, is available if necessary. I move the approval of policy item 1B7. Do I have a second? Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please so indicate. Any opposed, any abstentions? This matter is approved. Policy item 1B8 is a resolution to authorize a contract with Ithaca for Jstor Archive Collections, Jstor Forum, and Portico Preserved Collections. The university is seeking approval to renew this contract for an amount not to exceed $1,874,790 over four years. Interim Dean of Libraries and Information Resources, Michael Waldman, is available. I move the approval of policy item 1B8. Do I have a second? Any questions? Seeing none, proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please so indicate. Any opposed, any abstentions? This matter is approved. Policy item 1B9 is a resolution to authorize another contract with EBSCO for a database package. This is, this subscription is covered by the New York State Contract PC 69912, which expired on September 30th of this year. The university is seeking approval to renew the contract for a period of five years for an amount not to exceed $3,125,350. Interim University Dean Waldman is available if necessary. I move the approval of policy item 1B9. Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion or questions? All in favor, please so indicate. Any opposed, any abstentions? Seeing none, this matter is approved. Policy item 1B10 is a resolution to authorize a contract with Springer Nature for the Springer Journals Package of Nature Journals. The current contract with Springer Nature expires on December 31, 2024, and the university would like to renew this contract for a period of five years for an amount not to exceed Interim University Dean Waldman is available. I move the approval of policy item 1B10. Do I have a second? Any questions, any discussion? Seeing none, move to a vote. All those in favor, any opposed, any abstentions? This matter is approved. Policy item 1B11 is a resolution to authorize a contract with Wiley for the Wiley Journals Package. The university would like to renew this contract for a period of five years for an amount not to exceed $7,158,978. We thank interim Dean Waldman for continuing to be available. I move the approval of policy item 1B11. Do I have a second? Any discussion, any questions? All those in favor, please so indicate. Any opposed, any abstentions? This matter is approved. Those are the library contracts. Policy item 1B12 is a resolution to approve the Personnel Matters Report of the Finance and Administration Committee for November/December 2024. Personnel Matters Report is generated from the employee data entered into the university's system of record between September 1, 2024 and October 21, 2024, and does not contain appointments that have been submitted as individual resolutions. The report contains 2017 CP actions, including nine regular appointments, seven interim appointments or extensions of interim appointments, four salary increases, four separations, and three reclassifications. Senior Vice Chancellor Dorian Gloria is available if we have any questions. I need, I move the approval of policy item 1B12. Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, please indicate. Any opposed, any abstentions? This matter is approved. Policy items 1B13 through 1B30 are resolutions to appoint regular or interim members of the executive compensation committee. We're going to do these by college. Policy item 13 is at BMCC. Karen Williams as Vice President of Institutional Advancement. Vice President of Finance, and Julio Estiato is available to provide further background. I'm going to do them all. If you want to pull any out, let me know, and otherwise we will vote on them as a package. So let me know if you want to pull any of them out. Brooklyn College is Philip Napoli as Dean of the School of Humanities and Social Sciences. Policy items 15 and 16 are at the Bronx Community College. Jessica Seliger as Dean of Workforce Development and Continuing Education. Manny Lopez is interim Vice President of Student Affairs. Policy item 17, Gutman Community College, Carla Fuller as interim Dean of Faculty and Academic Affairs. Post-Dos Community College, Althea Sterling as interim Vice President of Student Development and Enrollment Management. Policy items 19, 20, and 21 at Hunter College, Annoi Partisani is interim Vice President for Academic Affairs and Provost. Alex Alexis Eggleton is interim Vice President for Institutional Advancement. Robert Demansky as interim Dean for Institutional Effectiveness. Policy items 22 through 26 are at John Jay College. Myrna Fornay as Executive Legal Counsel. Angela Crossman as interim Dean of Faculty. Janice Johnson Diaz as interim Dean of Student Academic Engagement and Retention. Daniel Matos as interim Vice President for Enrollment Management and Student Affairs. And Andrew Sidman as interim Dean of Academic Programs. Policy item 27 at City Tech, Hung Lee as interim Dean of the School of Technology and Design. Your College, Laurie Hafner as Vice President of Institutional Effectiveness. Items 29 and 30 are at the Central Office. Alicia Alvaro as interim Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost for Academic and Faculty Affairs. And Ann Wokes as interim Vice Chancellor of Academic and Faculty Affairs. I move the approval of items 1B13 through 1B30. Did I miss any?
No.
I don't think I, I think I got them all. I moved, is there a second? All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. With no more items on the policy calendar, let's address Section 2 Information Items, and there are two of them. Information Item 2A is the Fiscal 2024 Final Year End Financial Update and Fiscal Year 2025 Q1 Financial Update. Senior Vice Chancellor and Chief Financial Officer, Sharif Solomon, will present.
Thank you, Chad Berger. I'll be brief. The materials are in your packets. We're just going to give you some highlights. The fiscal year 2024 year end, if you recall, at the last meeting, we had a preliminary year end, we had to close some transactions, make some other adjustments. Final number are in. Structural deficit down to $68 million, which is $2 million less than where we were for the preliminary. So still moving in the right direction. Does not include funding for the PSE contract, which again is in the budget request, and we are certainly hopeful and looking forward to talking to our state partners about, about that. For the fiscal year 2025, for the Q1 update, just some key takeaways here. We're projecting that trend line to go down even further on the structural deficit, projected at this moment to be down by another $6 million to $62 million. I would note that included in this number are potential, potential nonrecurring costs that may be removed once we have confirmed those costs. So the structural deficit could be even lower, but it's early in the fiscal year, not ready to make that call yet. Expense reduction actions that we continue to take and revenue generation clearly support from our state and city partners in the last budget is helping, helping with these balances. And obviously, we still have some colleges with cash deficits, and we continue to work with them to make sure that they are eliminating those and ending in balance. So you see here, the projection is at $62 million. We'll continue to update you again. We will remove anything from the $62 million if they're identified as nonrecurring, confirmed as nonrecurring. Just last slide to talk about some of where we are in expenditures and revenue. On the PS side, expenses are projected to increase by 6%. That is really about the one-time retro costs that are being reflected, so I just wanted to note that. OTPS expenses expected to increase by 31% or $98 million. That, a big chunk of that is related to one-time funds that we receive from the state, right? And also, some particular campuses that have reserves at a certain level may be making some one-time strategic expense decisions based on some of those reserves. And so that is the story there on the OTPS expenses. On the revenue side, projected to be an increase of 4% or $49 million. And you see here the variation. It's really a mixed bag when you look at the seniors, you know, the graduates and community, you see the ranges up there. Clearly, we're going, you know, we're going to continue to work with them to reduce expenses so that those revenue enhancements can have a bigger impact on the bottom line. Any questions?
How are we doing on increasing our collections?
Yes, thank you for the question. We are, so last year, there was an increase from the prior year, 0.6%. To give you just an idea of what that means in terms of dollars, for every 1%, it's about $13.6 million, right? So we were happy to see that increase. We have a university-wide strategy right now that we are implementing. Pieces of it are already underway. There are things that we have already done. So for example, payment options for prior debt from previous semesters, you know, allow students to have, you know, a different range of options, 30, 60, 90 days in terms of plans to be able to pay those back. So we have that. We streamline international payments and make easier payments from international students. We also rolled out Apple Pay as a convenience factor so that students, you know, can pay quicker without entering into their credit card information. We're also looking at ways that we could offload some of the responsibilities at the campus level with, you know, by utilizing technology to be able to communicate with our students better, right? So there's a component that's there. And there are several other initiatives that are being planned to basically boost collections. The goal is to continue to creep up. The goal is to get to the NACUBO benchmark, which for senior colleges is 96.5, comprehensive is 95.5%, and for community colleges is 94.5%. So that's the goal. We're going to continue to chip away and get there with all the various strategies.
And we had several campuses on what I refer to as the watch list because of structural deficits that the fiscal year is over. How did we end the fiscal year with those schools?
Yeah, so we are, now that Q1 is sort of behind us, like we said, we're going to look at the, we're going to run through the objective criteria that we established that determines who, who is on that list. And then we're going to make a determination. We expect that a subset of colleges will come off the list, so we will report back to the board as soon as we do that criteria check, which, you know, which colleges will come off. And certainly, if there are any colleges that make their way on because they're projected to have a cash deficit, for example, or the other factors that we've established on how much the structural deficit is relative to resources, where are the enrollment trends going, those kinds of things, we'll be able to report back as to the status.
When will that report be?
That will be in this fall, so we will come back to you.
Any other questions for our CFO, Vice Chancellor? Seeing none. Information Item 2B is the Fiscal Matters Information Report. It was in your materials. Unless you have any questions on it, we will go past that, okay? Before I leave, I would like to welcome our newest member to the committee, Taisha Fields. Welcome. Now you see what you're getting yourself into.
Yes.
And for those who haven't met him, Daniel Redden, who is our new student trustee. And we welcome you, so thank you, Charlie. With no more items on the agenda, I move to adjourn this meeting. Do I have a second? Is there any opposition? Thank you all.
Thank you.